Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Start with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll consider June 7th, 2017, agenda. Additions, deletions, corrections. I'll have one to start out with. Per recommendation of City Council that our closed meeting be scratched because that don't qualify for a closed-meeting agenda item. That particular item, I think, should be discussed with the police and our attorney to solve that instead of through City Council. Anything else? We will have an addition with SEH on the updates. He's here to give us an update in watercolor removal, so we'll put that in on Department of Committee reports and action items. We'll run SEH in there on. Let's put him at 8D then, such he's a nice guy. Anything else the council has?
Are we still having the work session then afterwards?
We will have the work session afterwards because that is to talk to the other police matters that we were going to talk about.
Do you want to move that item under 8C-6? SEH, 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 SEH. This'll be up there.
Yeah, 8C.
8C.
Seven.
Seven.
It could be 8C-6 and then the.
Bumped in digital too.
So the campus discussion could be 8C-7 or.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put all the SEH together, I guess. That'd be the right thing to do, correct?
Very good.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments made, discussed.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, and made by Sean, second by Jim to approve Agenda for June 7th, 2017 as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Okay, then we go to comments, updates, and concerns. We start off with citizens. Anything from citizens?
Oh, my little citizen.
Just a minute, just a minute. No, you can. Jan, we need you to go up to. Or Nancy, sorry. Thinking way back. Nancy, could you go up to the podium and introduce yourself, then the people at home can see you?
Sure.
Then you're a celebrity.
Yep. Nancy Homme. And I just have a concern of our crosswalk markings in the uptown. I just, I don't know why they only like painted, like say in this main street, two of them, not all four, or just across on the highway. On this street alone here, I mean, I almost got hit crossing from this side of the street going to the Home Store. This side of the street's painted, but not that. And a big old truck comes zooming by, didn't even stop when I was going to cross. But also down by the library, crossing from Jerry's. From the library, there's no crossings across, you know, the highway side. I don't know what it takes or if it's MINDOT that decides what gets painted and whatnot.
It is MINDOT, but I let Chad go on that because he kind of knows some of that.
When the engineers and they had traffic studies done and a bunch of people looked at all that, you know, when you have an intersection as busy as this is out here, they really want to, you can't have a crossing mid-block and at every end of, you know, every half a block, we just can't paint all them crossings up. And I don't think MINDOT would allow that. And in this case, instead of having all four, they try to keep the pedestrian traffic, you know, to use these two to get across. It's not that you can't cross the other locations, but they're trying to, is that not right, Brent?
Yeah, it's mainly for pedestrian control, just like they have traffic control. They want to make sure that pedestrians are crossing the correct locations in the least dangerous.
Well, no pedestrian's going to walk over to this corner to go to that store because there's stripes painted on this way. There's no pedestrians that's going to do that. Most of all, they're going to walk in the middle of the street. But they won't come over here just because those lines are, you know, over here, the store's over there.
Right, that's just how they design it.
And if you stood on that corner and watched, they just don't do, they're just not doing it.
I know. We can put up all the signs you want. It's just like people, when they don't obey the speed limit, that's an enforcement issue. I guess if people aren't using the, you know, we have the flashing, RFFBs, rapid flashing lights here, and that's what they wanted to focus on, I guess, is channeling pedestrian traffic.
But then they don't think it's important to go from, like, from the library to the grocery store across the highway? They didn't think crosswalks there was important? MINDOT?
They look at the whole corridor, you know, holistically.
Yeah.
It was the same, kind of the same thinking that you can't have a stop sign every block. People don't like the speeding trucks going 30 miles an hour even.
Yeah.
But you can't have a stop sign every block either.
But it just seems like paint isn't as expensive as a stop sign or something, but.
No, I understand. I don't know if we could check with MINDOT or not, but.
MINDOT's got a different way of thinking than.
You know, and I know you can cross the street without having the painted lines. I know you can do that, but the cars just, I don't know if, you know, the cars just won't.
That approval have to be through, I mean, that's their right of way for one. So I think, wouldn't MINDOT have to approve that and bless that? So that would, you'd have to start that whole process of talks with MINDOT, I guess.
And then I had another thing to bring up. You know, people are complaining about not having enough parking spots on the main strip. And that whole side of the street in front of the Home Goods Store is all yellow. And, I mean, nobody's using that right turn lane. If you stood outside and watched, nobody's turning that right turn lane to make that right turn. Nobody is. No cars, no trucks, nobody's using it. The trucks need, they need, they take a wider turn. The cars don't even use it. So most people are complaining that they could use that whole side of the block for parking. And for the store, the store doesn't have enough parking.
That again is a design of MINDOT. We didn't have much to say about the parking and the turn lane.
Yeah, it took it away from the store, so that's MINDOT too, you know, they, but that's people that are complaining, so.
Unfortunately, it's stuff that we see also, but unfortunately, our hands are tied what we can and can't do in areas like that. Because technically, it is the Minnesota State Highway, and that's what we got to listen to MINDOT when they design it.
Okay, well, that's just, I just told them I'd bring it up at the.
Very good. Thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Walsh. And myself and Marty over here, we live on the 300 block of Jefferson. And what we're here for is alley concerns. Right now, our alley is grass. And we're in charge of maintaining it. And right now, there are two garages, and a third is going to be built. And in the spring. It's just a muddy mess. Right now, I can't even, I have a pad behind my shed that I can't even get to my trailer when it's raining because there's such ruts. And now that there's going to be a third garage and people are going to be using that, we're just hoping that maybe we could get it gravelled. I talked to Ty, and he thought that we should bring it up to you guys so you know kind of our concerns. Like, right now, I have to, we have to mow the grass, and it's really rough on my lawnmower, really, and right behind my house, it's really bad. You know, and when they come in with the equipment to build the garages, it rid them up, and it's just, it's just tough now that we're going to have a lot of use on there with another garage being built.
Yeah, I think I'd agree with you somewhat on that also, as if there's a dedicated three garages in that alley, it should probably be turned over to gravel.
Yeah, and like Ty was saying, every time someone goes through there, we're pulling a ton of mud onto the streets. And it's just now, it's going to be an alley that's being used, you know, and for many years, it wasn't, which is, was fine. It was easy to maintain, but not no more. So that's kind of what we're here to talk about, hoping that we can get some gravel on there.
Very good concern. We'll pass that on. I know you've talked to Ty already, but we'll talk to him also. And Kim, if you'd bring that situation up to Ty to look again and make sure we can go forward some of that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anything else from citizens? Counsel? Don, did you have something?
Go ahead and, I just want to ask questions about the agenda again, but go ahead and take, you can take comments from counsel first.
Okay. Counsel?
I got a couple things, if okay.
Okay, Jim?
Received a letter from a citizen who received an ordinance violation for peeling paint just recently. Very disappointed and questioning, you know, the fact that we're giving these ordinances out. There's many houses in town that this person feels is worse, and there's also many things that should be focused on by our police other than ordinance violations. I have spoke with this person and certainly indicated that there are many people in town who have received a like ordinance violation. In fact, the number is 54. So we have not singled out anybody. And I also encouraged this person by saying she needs to realize that if we don't enforce ordinances, we get calls from the neighbors of the people with the peeling paint that are complaining because of their neighbor's house and the peeling paint. So in a sense, we're caught in the middle. But just, I did indicate, she wrote me a very nice couple-page letter here. I'm not going to read it, you know, verbatim. This person, though, was also very complimentary of Officer Nelson, who is the ordinance officer, and, you know, thinks he's a wonderful asset to the community, understands it's not our police, it's, you know, city and ordinances, and just questions the intent of the ordinance. Hang on here, let me go down because there's. She also talked at length about that we should focus on the DARE program that seems to have gone away versus the ordinances, but I believe DARE is something from the school district, not necessarily us, we were a part of that, so.
The sheriff's office.
And the sheriff's office, right. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up. Another thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, as you know, we have had discussions with Arlington on joint policing. We are currently working with a contract which will be up at the end of this month. They received a petition, which you're aware of. There is an open house in Arlington on June 14th where they're going to be addressing it with as many of their citizens that want to come forward and hear, you know, what their thinking is and so on and so forth. It is open to the public. I will be attending, but if anybody wants to go, I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it. June 14th is that open house in Arlington on, to kind of answer some of the questions that came up with that petition, so. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, I just got one thing. I had a meeting with Phil Kaiton today, and they're ready to exercise their right on the option of the school. That's a first step, so it's good, it's a good news, meaning that the medical school is still rolling forward. So this option is what we, back in 2015 is the first time we approved this as a city council. It was renewed in 2016. And that renewed option runs till September 1st of 2017, so they're going to exercise their option before the expiration date on that. And I got forms here that Kim will have signed, and I had it reviewed by Don, and Don said they are fine. So we're going to be moving forward with the school and that. And if everything goes according to plan, hopefully, they will have possession sometime in September, so that we don't have to worry about the city owning the school going into the winter months. We just got to get through the abatement process and all that other deals that we have with the school district and moving in forward. But I just wanted to bring up, that was fresh news today from Phil, and I got the stuff to sign that we are moving forward with their option to buy the school. That's all I got. Anything else from counsel? Okay, then I'll move back to Don, a question on the agenda.
I'm just going to ask these questions just so if there is a problem, you can probably fix it before we get to this, but it's in regards to the agenda for the workshop. Now, what's posted and what we have for the agenda says just the hiring of the part-time administrative assistant. I heard Councilmember Landis say that she believed we were going to have a workshop on police issues.
I do believe that because that's what we were, we gave instruction to last week that we would be discussing some police business in a workshop after this council meeting tonight.
It's the do.
Based on the meeting we had with Officer, or Officer Chief Padilla.
Chief Padilla and Kim.
Kim, Don, and myself, so. I thought, and I am prepared, as well as Tony, I believe, to speak on the items that we thought we were having a meeting on, so I guess maybe if we're not.
It has nothing to do with that other incident that you're talking about.
Yeah. No, I was just concerned because I heard that, but then I saw the agenda, and I remember reading what was posted for the workshop, and that does not match what you intend to have. So I'm glad I brought it up, so. Maybe the way to fix that, does the council intend to address the administrative assistants?
Yes, actually, we could move that, that part, I don't know why we need a workshop on. That could be on the regular agenda.
All right. Well, I don't think you can technically have the workshop since it wasn't posted correctly and it wasn't put in the agenda correctly. My suggestion is if, is that the council pass a motion to amend the agenda to add the hiring of the part-time administrative assistants. And maybe, you know, since this is a regular meeting, I think it would be fine if you just add another new business, just to have a discussion about police matters. And just do that as part of the open meeting. And I think if you amended the agenda that way, you'd be fine.
I'm all right with that. So then we'd have to back up with Mr. Illinois's request that we amend our agenda. So I'd look that we put new business.
Administrative assistant?
Well, we'll put unfinished business administrative assistant because we've talked about that before. So we put administrative assistant under unfinished. And new business would be police matters. So now with that in mind, we'd have to do an updated motion to get them two into our agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, second by Jim, to update their motions on adding unfinished business as administrative, assistant administrator. And under new business, go with police matters. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Okay, I think we're ready to go forward.
Thanks, Don. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Thanks.
It's all right. It's good. Got to have it the way it's supposed to be. Okay, now we move on to consent agenda. There again, I ask, is there any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve as presented.
I just have a question. Last meeting, and it's in here, and you sent something out this week, Kim, I think, to try to explain it, but last meeting, we had a, what the? Resolution in 2017-12 that was, that was pulled out of the air because we did not have that resolution.
Correct.
We passed that resolution. Mr. Illinois asked that that be included in this packet this time. It's not included in the packet. It was sent out separate email to all of council this week.
It's in the Dropbox as well.
And I understand, but it wasn't sent out with the packet. But I'd have that now. But the question I had is, then the email came out with that resolution, talking about showing that we're in sequential order. So I just want to understand that the resolutions tonight, we have resolution numbers that are below 2017-12, as well as resolutions numbers that are above 2017-12. So are we temporarily out of order and we're back in order now on 20? Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, so.
Yes, with the passing of these proposed resolutions, we will be back in order.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a comment too? I do want that resolution as part of the public record, which means I do want it part of the packet at some point. To me, it's, what my concern is, is that the council was put in a situation where it had to pass a resolution that it didn't have and it hadn't seen. And it's on an issue, unfortunately, where the city, where there's a little bit of controversy. So it puts the city in a bad spot where it passed something that wasn't part of the packet. And if there's issues going forward, I at least want to be able to demonstrate, let's, for example, if we end up in court, that this resolution that was passed is actually part of the public record. So when I say I want it part of the packet, it means I want it part of the packet because I want it part of the public record. If we do end up in litigation, it's not going to be good enough that it was in the Dropbox or that it was sent out to council. It's got to be part of the public record.
And it was a part of the first thing when he gave his presentation, it was in that. And I thought I emailed you both about who.
I disagree with that because I looked through the packet that night as we were going through, and it was not anywhere in the packet that I had, which I printed off from Dropbox either the day before or that day.
It was in with his stuff, but it didn't look anything like our normal stuff. It was like what he must have put in.
He put in the packet, that's correct, but it wasn't prepared.
That's why it didn't look like anything. That's why I don't think anybody caught it.
But the resolution wasn't in there.
Yeah. I didn't see anything that looked like a resolution.
Yeah, it was.
Well, if what you're saying is that it didn't.
In any case, it was not put in, even if it was there, it was not put in the proper place for action item by council.
That's right.
And that's what I brought up to Kim. It was not where it needed to be. And it wasn't in our resolution form either.
That's right, it was not.
So it's, technically was not there. And that, it was numbered 2017-10, so that was a different number than we approved anyway, so we still, we need to have that exact resolution, 2017-12, as approved in public record for our attorney.
And that will be in the next agenda then.
Well, how's that working if the council passed 10 and now it's 12? How did that change happen?
Well, they passed the resolution, they did pass.
That's when we asked her the number, and she gave 2017-12.
I thought it was 12, because I had been working with resolutions.
Okay.
And so I thought that the next one was 12.
So what did, so what's, I just got more confused. So what is passed? We passed 2017-12.
Correct.
But it reverted now to 2017-10, is it?
No.
No.
Okay, I thought that's what I heard, and I was going to say, that ain't going to work.
Because we passed it as 12, so it's.
Right, okay.
Right.
Exactly. Anything else under consent agenda? Now I'd look for a motion to approve. Motion made by Tom, seconded by Jessica, to approve consent agenda with the discussion that we just had. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing, we have non-communication requests. We have nothing there. Then we move on to Department of Committee reports and action items.
Mayor and counsel, Barb Cranz, who is the library director, expected to be here this evening to submit or to present her proposal to replace the photocopier for the library. Unfortunately, she's had a family emergency, so she's not able to be here. We talked, and she said if you want, can pull it from the agenda tonight, and she would be back next time to give her report. If not, we can go, I can go through the report and we can pass it this evening.
I have a problem dealing with the copier.
I don't either.
Just go through the report, Kim, we'll be fine.
All right. She met with a representative, and they gave her some costs. And as you see in the cover sheet that I presented, the current copier was purchased new with a maintenance agreement in December of 2007, so it's 10 years old. And so when she contacted the Metro Sales, they gave her two replacement copier options. As you see, a refurbished copier that is between two and three years old, and it copies, prints, fax, scans, rotates, and has secure ports for emails, which is critical these days, where the old one did not have the secure port, as you see. And so then there was also an offer of a 2017 copier, again, a little newer, obviously. And they offered a five-year lease for both the refurbished and the new copier. And in my report, the current plan is with the old copier, $196.15 a month. For the new copier, it would be $237.19 a month, which would be $41 plus change more per month, giving us an increase of $492.48 more per year. The refurbished one with a five-year maintenance program is $171.60 per month, cheaper than both of the options that she, well, the current one that they have now and then with a new copier. And it's $24.55 a month less than the current plan and a $65.59 savings per month, giving us a total annual savings of $787.10 a month. Both she and I would propose to get the refurbished copier.
Sounds like a good plan to me if it's got a five-year plan behind it.
It does.
I moved to approve the refurbished new program for $171.60 per month.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Jessica, to go with the refurbished copier with the five-year plan at a cost of $171.60 a month. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Then we move on to 8B EDA, and that's for Resolution 2017-10.
I have some questions. Could you explain how you guys approved this a little bit?
Sure. Like past requests, it comes in a written request. We have the policy on what is authorized to do it, to where they're authorized to put them up. It's a $2,000 grant per business, I think is what the number is. And, you know, so we discussed it. We had the EDA pass it pending, getting funding from, because it meets the criteria like the other businesses that we've done in town. Go ahead and ask your questions, because we had questions too.
What are you talking about?
The signing on the oning grant, basically, to the one that we just approved at EDA.
Yep.
We had lengthy discussions on that. And it's, we felt it was similar to, correct me if I'm wrong, to the Huggsville situation where multiple businesses are under one roof. And, you know, so that's kind of where we went there, because there's essentially three, three businesses ran out of that same building.
Three businesses?
Yep.
Will you bring up where I disagreed? What I remember my, what my points to the authority were is that by making the decision that they did, I thought that that decision put us in a position where if we had to that they did, I thought that that decision put us in a position where if we had to enforce it down the road and get the grant back, that I felt that we would not be able to enforce it, because I didn't feel we had proof that that was actually a place of business. So if we were in a situation where he violated the terms and we had to say, get it back, if we ended up in court, I just, I felt we were missing the key piece of information. So that's where I disagreed with it, because I felt we didn't have adequate information that one of those places was an actual place of business for that entity.
And which location was that?
It's only one location.
It was one location, but I think the business was.
Three businesses.
Was Kirsch.
Kirsch Real Estate.
Yeah.
Kirsch Great Escape and the whatever their business with paint and.
Interior.
Interior, yeah, Kirsch.
Yeah.
You know, so it was presented as three businesses that are operating under the same address, three separate LLCs. You know, in fact, there was, was potentially a similar application for another place, same owner, and we said no to that one. The senior center, in fact.
And my point was, I didn't think we had proof that Kirsch Real Estate was actually had that building as its place of business. I'm not saying it's not its place of business, it's just I didn't think we had information to establish that.
So then, why come they didn't only go with the two, why did they still grant the three?
That's, I, my take is that.
I just feel that this is a good program and I just, I don't like it when there's iffy stuff in there, you know? I, I don't like that, especially when the city's given the money, you know, that it's not a good thing.
I, we talked at length about it, because also, as you may see by the design, some of the onings are on second floor. And I questioned if that would open up another Pandora's Box.
There's another thing.
You know, but, you know, at the end, after discussion by the E D A, we determined that they do in fact have three businesses. They, you know, may, they, we know two of them for sure are out of there and they're suggesting that their other businesses ran out of that location. We have not asked for anybody, proof of anybody else necessarily in the past, although it's fairly obvious in those cases, I think. So, you know, so you're suggesting two out of the three then?
Yeah, if our own attorney is questioning it, I mean, doesn't that put questions in your head? I don't know. I just feel that this is a good program and I don't.
I do too. I think we all agree, that's why we want to do it, Jessica. That's why we want to do it.
Do all three?
We want to do this program, we want to sell this program. We could, this, what we're talking about here today is a resolution for the E D A to give money. Quite frankly, E D A has already approved it, pending the money, which we don't have. You know, the E D A has had authority in all other cases to approve these, so, because council's given that authority. If we have the money, in this case, we are coming to council right now saying, for this to go through, we need to again move money, which we've done in the past, so thank you for questioning it, I appreciate that. You know, I don't know if they'll do it if we only do two out of three. I don't know that. We'll have to send that back to Mr. Klemick. And if there's concerns, we should perhaps, you know, ask those questions.
And again, my comments were focused on enforceability. So I don't want to speak for the E D A, but my interpretation of what the E D A did was that they went forward with the knowledge that if push came to shove, they couldn't enforce that particular one, but that risk was less important to them than going forward and providing the program. That's my interpretation of it.
It wasn't a quick decision by E D A, there was lots of discussions.
I can appreciate that. If I measure the risk for something like that versus a business coming to the city for a ten-thousand-dollar loan, that we're not going to get the knowledge that they might be floundering, we just gave away ten thousand dollars that we never got back. You know, we're getting something to beautify the downtown area, which the program's designed to do. I hear exactly where you're coming from though.
It wasn't without discussion, Jessica.
Well, I know, and I see that you even seem to be against it.
I was initially, I was initially, because I'm afraid of the potential of Pandora's Box being opened up on all the second-story apartments. In this case, it worked, because that is where the Kirsch Real Estate is, is officed. Well, it's either there or their house, but where is it, you know?
We can't be in a position to judge that where that business is located, that's not our position. They're saying it's there and if the address is there, that's all we can go by.
I guess, but just reading the minutes when I see my attorney questioning it, you know, that just kind of flags it.
Mm-hmm.
Especially when it's the city's money and we're accountable for it and it's a good program and we just don't want people to start taking it.
I, I hope people continue to take advantage of it, not disadvantages. I want them to take advantage of that program.
I think in the best interest of the council, it's great questions. Jessica, we, you and I have spoken on this a little bit prior to this meeting. And at the same time, I want to applaud E D A to go through it in length that they did. I know it was a tough decision. And I think without doing what's called micromanaging, I think the E D A is the one to decide this and if it comes back, you know, and we're the ones to fund it, so I would go with the E D A's lead on this. And if they went through it and figured it's deemed to go forward, so be it.
We can certainly in the future just bring all these to council.
I'd rather.
I'm sure, that was a joke, that was me being, I was just being a joke. I totally understand what you're getting at. Come on, that's me, I'm just that way.
So with that, I'll go back to resolution twenty seventeen dash ten.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash ten. For the oning fund.
Second.
Motion's been made by Sean, seconded by Chad, to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash ten, approving six thousand dollars to the oning program. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And we move on to H C Administrative Department. And we start out with consider update special assessment policy. Don Linoey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, in your packets, for the second time in a row, you have a proposed policy. You had seen this policy for, most part, the same language at the last meeting. We had discussed at the last meeting, the benefit to the city having a standalone assessment policy. In the past, our assessment policies have been just specific to a particular project that's going on. I think there is a benefit to having a standalone policy independent of the projects that we can turn to and rely on in all situations. Again, the language is relatively, or pretty much the same as what you saw at the last meeting, with the exception of page eight to fifteen, a number fourteen. I did add the language, maintenance not assessable. It says that work and costs that are considered maintenance will not be assessed against the property. However, work that involves providing new materials or replacing materials and disrepair will be assessed against the property. You have not seen that language before, that is new. Otherwise, everything is the same. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have, but I would recommend that the city adopt this policy.
There you have it. Do you have any questions of Don with their new assessment policy, basically just with that addition that he mentioned? Now I'd look for a motion to approve it with updated version that's in our packets. Motion's been made by Jessica, seconded by Tom, to approve standard special assessment policy as updated in our packets. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And we consider final plans and specs for twenty seventeen Northwest Sewer Sanitary Sewer Project.
All right, Mayor, Council. In the packet, we sent out plans for the twenty seventeen project. Nothing, not a whole lot has changed from the feasibility report. Notable changes, I guess, is more of looking at, we reduced some of the manhole rehab numbers a little bit, but for the most part, it's pretty much as you've seen before. So I guess with that, we recommend asking approval for the plans and specs and, and go into the bidding process. Is there any questions regarding what's presented in the plans at all?
Okay, then we need a motion to approve these plans and move forward with the bidding process.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Sean, to approve plans as presented and move forward with the bidding process. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. All right, and then we're at. What's this all now?
This is a resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen.
So we need to do it in.
In resolution form, huh?
So I'll make a motion to approve twenty seventeen dash thirteen, to approve the plans and specs and ordering the advertisement of bids.
Okay.
Second.
By Jim, seconded by Sean, for resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen for plans and specs and advertisement of bids. All in favor signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries. Okay, then we go down to H C four, consider adding Jefferson Avenue to the twenty eighteen Tenth Street project.
So discussions with council and city staff. We took a look at adding the Jefferson Avenue project to the twenty eighteen feasibility study. This would be included as a separate section within the feasibility study, all in the same project. And the reason being is extending sanitary sewer, connecting to an existing manhole on Jefferson Avenue, extending to the east, and then doing a full reconstruct of Third Street East, which is currently just a grass alleyway or right-of-way, extending that up to the north property line where that future development is planned, to get sewer and water up to that future development. Thus, eliminating the current sanitary sewer line that goes under ambulance building, I believe. So it's kind of a rehab, rehabilitation, new construction to alleviate that line going under the building for future issues, more or less. In doing that, we're kind of proposing to redo a short section Jefferson Avenue and extending Third Street North and doing that as part of this feasibility study for the twenty eighteen project. Again, keeping the costs separate, so we can look at it individually as possibly an alternative in the future. So that is why this resolution is before you, just to include it in the feasibility study for the twenty eighteen Tenth Street project. Formality, more or less, so.
Yeah, it's formality, I guess, but the sanitary sewer, you're moving, that's moving over to Third Street then? That one you're eliminating?
Yes, yep. So basically, we'd, instead of the kitty-corner route that it's currently taking, we'd straighten it out, put it in as it technically should be.
So we can connect up to that in front of the police station on that street that's supposed to go down there to go for that addition behind the Napa store?
Correct, correct.
You have to tie back into that existing line with another manhole or something then? Is there something?
Yeah, we, yeah, there's another, the manhole where that twelve-inch line currently go, connects to on Jefferson, we tie into that manhole.
But then as that heads north, do you have to intercept that existing line that's supposed to?
You're going to have to, because the Napa store and Swenson Motorsports are hooked up to that.
Yeah, currently that, there's a line that runs east-west up on that north property line.
Okay.
We connect into that line. This map doesn't show it.
All right.
Correct, all the way, but there is a new line that runs east and west.
Oh, okay.
That's not showing on this map.
Oh.
Ah, okay.
So.
That explains it.
All right.
And Third, Third Street is planted. Third Street East is planted.
The right-of-ways, yeah.
Right-of-ways planted.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good addition. Our city property to the north's not so worthless if this is completed.
And I think that was one of the main intentions of this, is just to get the sewer water stub to that, so it would be easier for that, that area to be developed.
Yeah, I thought we had pretty well consensus that our.
Yeah, we're moving in that direction anyway to get that back area, so we could get that developed, so yeah. I agree with putting this on that study.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of the Jefferson Avenue as part of the twenty eighteen study.
This is resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven, Jim.
Can we just do it in one motion?
Where to help?
To the action question.
Next one, right, yeah.
And it's right next in the.
So this is eleven?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sean, by the way.
Okay, there's been a motion by Jim, seconded by Sean, approving to move forward, approving resolution twenty seventeen dash eleven with adding Jefferson Avenue East on Tenth Street Project for twenty eighteen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And we're going to have an update on the water tower, correct?
Yes, so the water tower tank demo is planned for this Sunday. We sent out letters earlier this week on, on the fifth, notifying all residents in the area that their power will be shut off if, if the contractor goes, goes through unrelated to weather issues. They'll be here onsite at five AM and the outage is set to be started at six AM and will continue through the tower demo, which is actually going to begin at eight-thirty to approximately two-thirty or three. So that's when the contractor will call the power company to come restart all electrical service. So it's potentially power outage from, from six AM to two-thirty to three o'clock PM. After they're done with the demo, from three to five or six, they'll be doing cleanup and miscellaneous items. One of the items that they will be doing during the demo is removing the siren. I've talked to Ty and we're just going to place a siren by one of the buildings for them to pick up at a later time, so. Weather, I checked the weather yesterday and the weather was supposed to be ninety-five degrees and twenty-five to thirty-five millonar winds. Now today, it's saying sixty percent chance of rain, ninety-one degrees. So I just want the council to be aware of that, you know, that hot temperature, no AC, no ability to run fans, there might be some, some calls. I mean, they should all be aware from the letters that we sent out.
Yeah, there's plenty of letters, but we'll still have.
So, but we're, I can guarantee probably get a few calls. Yep, so. Yep, so, the contractor did say that, you know, they'll still plan that day, they'll look at the weather. If they see ahead of time that, they know that they're not gonna be here, they'll kind of update everybody on that, but typically, he said, it's usually the day of that they cancel, if they, if they're gonna cancel. So, depending on the weather, again, the rain, I see there's chance of thunderstorms that morning that could hold it back to the next date, which is two weeks, I can't remember, two weeks from Sunday, I think, is what they plan, so. Just a quick update on that and...
Speaking of weather...
That's really, really all I have.
Talk rain, now you made it rain outside.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So...
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It is, yes, it is.
Is there some way that the sheriff's department has telephone contact? I thought I had a call the other day from County Road 9 was closed.
Yeah, I had that.
Doesn't that Sibley County Emergency Management?
Yeah, Sibley County does that, Emergency Management.
That'd be some way they can notify the people if there's a change or...
I think if they get up and they have power, they're gonna know there was a change.
Yeah. I don't think they can signal it out. I don't know if you could, I think we're just gonna have to run with it.
I don't have power, I don't have phone.
I think it's Sunday School.
School building won't have power, but the church will, I understand.
I had a couple people ask that and I called in today and, yeah, so spread the word. I had, actually, one of the people that worked for the church, then I told him to send a text out to their group or whatever, so. They're lost, they're losing their principal, so they're kind of...
That's not their side, that's your problem.
Yes, we know.
Okay, then we move on to HC6, and digital proposals to scan city documents, Kim?
Mayor and council, there was $5,000 approved as part of the 2017 budget for document imaging. And by law, we are required to retain and preserve certain and various documents, including address maps, plans, and council meeting minutes. And while staff is able to save currently some of our documents that we use, these documents are being stored paper form and causing some space issues. So, we would like to ask council for the ability to contract for document images up to $5,000. We got two bids, and as you see, one from River City Data and the other from Indigital. And we are proposing as staff to, if we are able to move forward with contracting with Indigital, because their proposal seems to be a lot more cost-effective and they covered many more things than we were able to get taken care of through what we saw in the River City data proposal. River City is, would be charging, let's see, up to, they would be charging 79 cents or points, almost eight cents per clean image, whereas the proposal from Indigital was charging about .4 cents an image. And they would do 11 by 17 images as opposed to the River City, which was doing eight and a half by 11. So we could go up to the 11-inch by 17 images and still retain the .04 cents as opposed to the only eight and a half by 11 for nearly eight cents a copy. And so throughout the whole bid comparison, we found that Indigital had a better, they were able to do book scanning for 18 cents an image. And their clerical preparation was $15 an hour as opposed to, I believe, Indigital was $18 an hour. So we just figured that the Indigital proposal was more cost-effective.
Any idea what percentage of the available material to be copied will get covered by this? Because I'm guessing we're gonna have to budget this multiple years to...
We were talking earlier today, as a matter of fact, and we were thinking, hoping that one of those cabinets would be, the $5,000 would cover that one of those cabinets, if not part of the next cabinet. And then they would destroy, they would shred...
There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, and they would shred the documents so that, and get rid of them, so we wouldn't have to deal with that.
Well, we've only been talking about for six, seven, eight years.
As long as I've been mayor and...
Seven years I've been on council.
The historical documents aside, too, that's a whole nother...
Yeah, that's another issue there, too, so.
Keep adding...
I agree that Indigital would be the one, so I need a motion to move forward to approve the $5,000 in imaging, scanning.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Tom, seconded by Jim to move forward with Indigital in scanning city documents. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. We go on to unfinished business, administrative assistant position, Kim?
We had, also, this had been part of the budget for 2017, to hire a part-time administrative assistant. I received three applications, met individually with two of the three, and I had submitted a proposal to the council with information on each of the applicants and the interviews that we conducted. And so I'm asking the council for the...
Discussion on topic, council. And your recommendation, could you make it so the people at home can tell me who you're recommending starting?
I am recommending that we offer the position to Ms. Colleen Snyder based on the information that she provided during her interview and would like to move forward with that.
With only three applicants, do we feel that we had a quality pool of applicants? And, or, I mean, would she have stood out with 20 applicants?
I believe she would have.
So, I mean, I know her.
The other applicant was also talented, but she could not provide coverage on Wednesdays where we need it the most.
Seeing the background she had with Michael Foods, I think she'll be fine, in my opinion. So with that, then I'd look that we approve the hiring of Colleen Schneider for administrative assistant.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Jessica, had a brain. Oh, I can't say that. And seconded by Sean. We gotta get a little funny.
I try to inject it. I'll get yelled at.
To approve Colleen Schneider for administrative assistant, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we move on to new business, and we got Chief Tony here, so we gotta bring him up. This is Police Matters, and topic is gonna be Officer Retention. Let's throw it out there, Tony.
Mayor, council members, Tony Pedia, Police Chief. I actually have some documents for you to look over while I am speaking, so. If you'd be so grateful to pass those around. They are citations, they're in the packet for each one of them. Thank you for being short, you got the microphone in the right spot for me. I'm here tonight to address Officer Retention. This is, when we put together the consolidation plan for Arlington, one of the three components of it was retention for officers and kind of giving them more to do, positions of leadership would become available and just more incentives for them. And in the meantime, for reasons that we won't go into depth here, lately, we've had two officers, one just completed a background with Metro City and is moving along in a process. And after speaking with the chief of that department, it looks like he'll be starting there on the 10th of July, and another one is getting backgrounded by another agency outside of our county, and it's, his isn't completed yet, but it's, his start date would be around the beginning of October. So, with that in mind, that leaves us with one officer and myself, and we, I wanted to have an opportunity to speak to the council about options that we have and incentives on things that we could do here locally within our council to keep officers. So right now, every department is having hiring problems, and when I say that, I mean literally every, I went up to the chief's conference the last two years and it's been a huge topic at every conference and with recruiting, recruiting quality officers. There's a lot of competitions going on between agencies, and right now, just so you guys have some kind of an idea, Arlington, for their full-time position, had 34 applicants. Out of that 34, they interviewed, seven actually interviewed, and I asked for three for a chief's interview and they could, they could only come up with two, and then out of that two, they only really want to offer the position to one person, and that one person wasn't really ready to commit for any kind of a long-term, it was just kind of a short-term thing for this person while they, we're gonna try to get another job. So they said that if, basically if he didn't take it, they wanted to reopen it again because of the applicant pool that they, they experienced. With Gaylord, we just hired a part-time recently, and we ended up with less than 30 applications and out of that, we ended up taking the number five person on the list. So there are obvious problems with hiring right now, the pool's not as strong, and there's many reasons for that. But what I wanted to talk about this evening is where we're at with something that we can control, and that's wages. So, the League of Minnesota Cities has a guide of like-size agencies, and I was able to get that. And basically, there's 29 cities that are close to the same size as us, and out of those 29, Gaylord's 19 for starting pay. The next sheet kind of shows you the top end, and right now, out of the 29 cities, Lakeville's 15. So, you look at a couple of cities that are relatively close by, that are very successful in retaining officers, and they have a really good retention rate, I guess. Glencoe is number one, and they have a four-step process. Basically, there's start, one, two, and three, and speaking with the chief, he feels strongly about getting the officers up to the, to the top of the pay scale as fast as possible. And there's several reasons for that. When you, when you draw it all over a long time, you may have your top end at $34 an hour, but, for example, some agencies, there's officers that have been with them for 17 years and are not even close to the top yet. So, just because you say that that's your top, if you can't get there, or it takes 10 years, it's too long. So, the other one was La Sourd, and the interesting thing about them is they, they've had an excellent, they've done an excellent job with retention, and their top pay was actually in four steps prior to, they got a new city administrator over there, and one of the things that the union and the council or the city administrator kept going back and forth about was, was the steps. So, because of all their officers, except for one, were maxed out, they agreed to go to this nine-step process so that the majority of them could get a raise. But as you can see, this is, this is something that they just went to, and that was something that the city wanted in return for the officers to get a pay raise. But prior to this, they've, they've had a four-step process similar to what Glencoe's had.
Tony, do you know what their fourth step was in La Sourd before they went to the nine-step, what their top pay scale?
Yeah, so their eighth step, like, on that scale, was what their, their top pay was, and this just gave them that extra step. So that the officers could still have an incentive. And again, they're, they're unioned, so they kind of voted on that, and there's a majority versus the one new person because of retirement. So we kind of talked about our process, we talked about Arlington's and where the, the other agencies are at with recruiting officers as well. And just to take that a little bit further, some agencies, back in the day, if you had a bad mark in your packet, I mean, they would just, there were so many applicants, they're getting 200 applicants for a position, they wouldn't even, they wouldn't even consider you, they would just throw your packet away, versus now, I mean, the standards have become a lot more lenient, you know, so, and everybody's fighting over the same pool. If you look on our job pool line, there's literally probably 10 agencies at any time that are hiring versus, you know, when, when I was hired here, there was probably five or six, and, you know, they were hiring one. So, it's, the times have changed. So, what I was interested in attending or getting feedback on was changing our pay, our pay scale for the, for the officers. And one thing that everybody has to keep in mind is, all the police officers that we have working are college-educated, they all have college degrees, they all have to go through a police academy, they all have to maintain a license to the state of Minnesota with continuing education, and so it's, it's a little different than some of the other jobs that we have. The commitment that the officers have is different nights, weekends, holidays, on-call, court on your days off, could be during your vacation. I think Don waits for us to put in our vacation dates before he schedules court for us.
I do.
Right? So, and you know, we're ultimately looking at taking people's civil liberties away from them, so you want quality people in this position. So, what I'm proposing, what I'm, what I'm here tonight to talk to the council about is number one, counting, or cutting our steps from nine steps down to technically, I guess it'd be four with the starting pay and then, then three steps. In addition to that, I'd like to take our probation period, that's currently right now is six months, and make that a year. That gives us more time to assess our candidates and make sure that they're ready to go, and, you know, during the probationary period, as an officer, it's, it's pretty easy to get rid of somebody, but once they've passed that probationary period, it's a lot more difficult. In six months, they're still training, they don't really know what's going on yet, and it's hard to make a, a good assessment on, on what they're gonna be like. So, three steps, one, actually, literally four with a start, and I'd like to change the, the top pay, increase it for more of an incentive to get officers to, one, come to our city, and two, stay once they've been here. I think what you see right now with our police department, with the community service that we do, every month, each officer's donating, volunteering two officers, or two hours per month to do things throughout the community, whether it's, some people don't feel comfortable reading books to kids, so some officers are mowing lawns, some officers are reading books to kids, there's the chess club that's been going on, they've, they've shoveled people's snow, they've, they've helped veterans get to medical appointments, any, they've, we've taken water... Any, they've, we've taken water out of somebody's basement, their basement was flooding, so like a bucket brigade. Help people get driver's licenses. I mean, the list is endless of how we've been volunteering in the community. We don't, we don't ask for, you know, a pat on the back for that, but, but what you have to understand is when, when your officers have that kinda commitment to your community, you wanna keep those officers and you wanna, that's what you want for, for a quality of officer. So my proposed pay scale reflects that. I don't know what the opinion is of the, the councils, but that's what I'm recommending or opening up for discussion.
So what are you saying, for the proposed pay scale? Start and then how fast can you get to step three? Is that essentially three years, annual review, potentially? Good review, you get the step, so in three years you could be.
Well, I, this is what I would recommend. Right now, we do it on calendar year, so every January. I would say to keep it on their anniversary of their start date. So they start, let's just say August first, an officer starts, they start at the start pay. And then upon successfully completing their probation period, then they go to step one on their one-year anniversary. You know, the next year, step two, and then the final would be step three after their third year.
Tony and I have, and Kim, Don and I, we met on this and we had a lengthy discussion and that's why we wanted this to go to workshop with council. You know, one of the things that you don't see in front of you is the cost of recruitment, the cost of hiring and the cost of training. If you do enough searching, it is somewhat considered an industry standard that it costs the equivalent of one-half of one-year salary to recruit, to hire and to train a police officer. So let's just assume for a minute that's fifty thousand dollars. So it would cost the city of Gaylord twenty-four thousand dollars to get an officer up to speed. And three years later, or less than three years later, we lose them. It seems to me that I would much rather invest the money on wages with the hope that those guys will be retained. Because, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but the thought is if we have a wage scale like this, this will be a high enough wage where most likely, they would have to take pay cuts to go to other agencies.
Right. And, and the projected, on the projected scale, we'd still be number nine overall, so we're not moving up to number one, we're just in the top ten. And exactly, it, you know, everybody gets used to their quality of life based off their money they're making and, and if you're paying them well and they, they feel like they're appreciated, you know, that's the intent, the incentive that we're trying to use to keep them.
The, and another factor and the op, one officer who's leaving is our city benefits too, which is something we're gonna have to take a serious look at this coming year for budgets and as well as, you know, you know, maybe joining into one of those multi-city coalitions or something like that to get a better offering for not just our police force, but for all of our city employees.
He come out this June, right?
And I, some, I submitted a request for information and got it in like the third week in May, so I'm still waiting. And I hadn't put a note to call.
But, I mean, I, I know it's not budgeted for this year and it's probably too late to save and salvage what, what's most likely.
Well, that would be my next question. Leaving us, would any of these amounts salvage anybody that's talking about moving on?
I think the, the first one that's going to the metro, I, I just think it's, it's.
That's a done deal.
That's a done deal.
Second one?
It's a possibility, it's, it's not as far along in the process and that was his biggest issue, that he, he kept telling, you know, me and pretty much anybody else, I would listen. So, you know, just to speak to the expenses, you know, the, the background, the psychological, the physical, the FTO, uniforms and the handgun, you know, you're looking at over eleven thousand dollars just for those, those expenses and it's not like, this is to say hypothetically, Ben leaves, we have to find somebody like exactly his same size to give his stuff to, you know, if, but what are the chances of that? It's tough. And, and, and along with that, the other thing that we're really not talking about is just feeling comfortable on our own, you know? It, it takes a solid year before an officer really kinda feel, starts to feel comfortable with what they're doing and, and making decisions and, and, and just doing their job. I'm not saying that they have all the experience in the world, but it's a good year before they're really on their feet and, and, and moving along. So if you look at that with, let's just say Ben, he's been here two years and now he's really kinda starting to come into his own and everybody, I've, well, I've heard a couple people that were upset about ordinance things, but other than that, I mean. Everybody loves Ben and everybody thinks, you know, the world of him speaks very highly of him, so, you know, what do you do?
With all these comments that I'm seeing, I'm, I'm actually advocate that this is gonna be money saved if we raise our wages to the police department. I don't see anything but saving money by raising our rates in wages. So I'm in favor of doing it immediately.
Put together, with some of the personnel policy, any, or have to be adjusted, I suppose, some of the stuff that I was talking about, the probation.
Yeah, we'll have to amend the probation. We should put in writing just how the steps are gonna work.
Get a full proposal put together and bring it back to council for.
For next meeting, can we have it done by next meeting?
I think so, yeah.
That'd be good. Quicker we can move on it, the better.
Is that something that I do, Don, or is it?
We can work together on it.
And I, I just have to ask, so the officers that are here, they're gonna fall in line with the steps proportion to their years of experience then is, you know, so it's not like we're gonna put them at the start, which, where they're gonna fall into the two or the potentially the three, depending on how long they've been here.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. I think that's money well spent, so.
Like I stated before, I think it's savings.
And, and again, I mean, we touched on it, but insurance, it, it ain't just, insurance is not just the police department.
Right.
Right.
Any new employees, a family, we've got real big trouble there.
Well, we, they, they can't afford the insurance that we're offering right now. We gotta make it affordable for the family to get on it, so we have to take a good, long look at that.
We're excluding, I mean, right there, you're taking out half your pool.
Absolutely.
Another issue.
Yep. All right, then move forward with that, Tony, Don. Bring back, back to our next meeting for review and approval.
Perfect.
Don, how long does it take for an attorney to feel comfortable? Ten, twenty years?
You know, at least three, I think.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony.
Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda that I see unless there's any comments before we adjourn. Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Sean, adjourned, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.